Good morning.
We're on the record.
Today is Thursday, December 4th, 2025, hours 9:30 a.m. This is the time and place set for a special meeting of the Taxi Cab Authority Board for public hearing. We are at Nevada State Business Center, 3300 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 400, Nevada Room Las Vegas, Nevada. I will call us to order, and the record should reflect that all members of the board are present. Administrator is here, counsel is here. It appears to me parties all here. So I will call us to order and ask that member Jeffrey be just like.
I would just do the fun I put in my state. It's to the Republic, it stands one nation under God, the end of this, he has justice.
Having reviewed affidavits of publication and receipts and certificates of posting, it appears to me this matter has been properly noticed and posted in accordance with that is open meeting law matters. Take us to our second agenda item, which is but comment. This matter is on our agenda pursuant to NRS 241, Dr. 241, that is open meeting law. That side for members of the public who wish to address us on matters within our jurisdiction. We may not take action on those matters. What we do welcome members of the public, either present or remotely, who wish to provide public comment. Is there any member of the public who would wish to give public comment? Same, Madam Secretary, is there anybody remotely participating who wants to provide public comment?
No.
I'll close public comment. That takes us to the one item of business. This matter is set for public hearing on the second amended application of Desert Cab to adjust taxi cab charges to include 50 cents per taxi ride pass through software license charge on all trips. Based on a negotiated agreement. As previously noticed. The purpose of today's hearing is to close up the record, allow oral argument for any counsel of party who wishes to and for the or to deliberate an act. A preliminary matter. Going to, just for the record. High up, what is the administrative record in this case, so that if there's any issues about that, clarify that fully. Before we close the record, the administrative. The record in this matter is contained in exhibits. Which are numbered one through 56. Those exhibits include prefiled direct and supplemental testimony of witnesses, which are exhibits one, two, seven and eight, 23, 24, 21, 22, 38, 40, 25, 39, and 26 and 41. The record is also consists of hearing transcripts for three days of evidentiary hearing, contested case, September 17th through 19th, 2021. In addition, supplementing those transcripts is a publicly available video recording of them, so there's both audio and visual and a written transcript. There are, to my reckoning, and so this is one where I want counsel to pay attention if I've missed something. To my reckoning, based on the proceedings, there were six requests for official notice. There were requests for exhibit 16, 17, 55 and 56, all minutes or orders from previous years of the Taxi Authority. There was a request for us to take official notice of the number of taxi cab rides in, embedded in the statistics in 24 and 25 of the Taxi Cab Authority. It's also a request for administrative notice of the number of medallions currently standing. And number of vehicles. Weighted to that, all from the statistics, published statistics of the Taxi Cab Authority. That is my list of everything that I believe constitutes the administrative record. Does any council of record believe we've missed anything that should be in the administrative record? Oh, I, I, counsel, you can approach, but additionally, all of the decisions of the hearing officer to which the administrator referred, those orders are also, and all pleadings and papers filed with us are in the records. Neglected to state that, so that's the administrative record is, yes, counsel, please state your name.
Robert Oriol for Captain. Not sure if I heard whether the deposition transcripts were in the record.
The deposition transcripts, Mr. Oriol, are marked as admitted as exhibits 46 through 50. Very, 46, they're with me, 46.
54.
54. That's, they're in the, yes. Anything else? Okay. That will, unless any board members, any questions on that? That will constitute, we will close, that is the administrative. We have received and digested closing briefs from each of the parties, but at the close of the hearing, Vice Chairman Graff extended the offer to take oral argument. It's not required, but if you wish, we are happy to hear it and would do so next. Does the applicant want to present?
Yes.
You may, but what I'm going to do first, before you start, is ask each of the council go through the regulation to make an appearance. So you may go first, but.
On behalf of the applicant, Desert.
Robert Oriol for Captain.
Neil Tomlinson on behalf of IBSC IP LLC.
Scott Schirr on behalf of Taxi Management, intervenors Taxi Management and Curb Mobility.
Very good.
Just take care on behalf of the administrator.
Thank you. You may, on behalf of the applicant, present or argue.
Honorable Chair, members of the authority. The record developed over three exhaustive days of testimony, thousands of pages of the administrative record, multiple rounds of briefing established beyond any serious dispute, the 50 cent per trip pass through software license fee is legally authorized, is supported by substantial evidence, is in the public interest, and most importantly, the only viable mechanism here for avoiding risk of catastrophic consequences to Nevada's Taxi Cab Authority. Interveners Curb, Taxi Management, and even the administrator raised some concerns, but none of them provided evidence of legal authority sufficient to overcome the overwhelming record supporting this application. Their arguments are unavailing. Before I address that, I wanted to touch upon the legal standard. The legal standards cited by applicant and all parties to this proceeding are not disputed. I don't want to belabor this standard, but the scope and the intent of the standard bears repeating. Nevada law requires this authority to ensure safe, adequate, economic and efficient taxi cab service. The overarching statute, NRS 7061511C mandates that the authority regulate to ensure, and I underscore this word, uninterrupted service. NRS 7068819 sub 1A grants the authority the ability to adjust and approve rates, which is precisely why we're here. And a corresponding regulation, NAC 706909 sub 3, requires evidence of circumstances and conditions justifying the rate. These laws and regulations frame Desert Cab's application and essentially what has happened over the last 10 months that we've all spent together. At the outset, Desert Cab came to you with this issue. Desert Cab was candid, fell on the proverbial sword to explain this problem facing not just Desert Cab, but the entire industry. And this problem spawned from patents that were applied for and issued to IBSC. We appeared before this board and outlined for you precisely what was going on and what the proposed solution was on the table. In response, Chairman Reiser correctly reminded us, this is not a patent authority, it's a taxi authority. Under chairman's guidance, we were directed to proceed with a rate case as customarily brought before the board and heard by this board. A hearing officer was assigned, case management protocols established, discovery ensued, briefing submitted, and we had our three day hearing. This backdrop is important, and here's why. Contrary to this, the arguments in the opposition briefing, the applicant is not required to prove patent infringement here, nor are we required to litigate validity. The opposition testimony and briefing continue to harp on the non-establishment of patent infringement, which obfuscates what determination was, what must be actually made by you. Here, the authority must only determine whether the risk, the economic exposure, and the need for industry-wide protection justifies the rate change. The unrefuted evidence shows they do. I wanted to touch on certain key pieces of evidence that arose in the three day hearing. The record is ample and robust, but these evidence pieces prove undisputed facts. One, the patent risk is real, immediate and universal. How do we know this? Look to the detailed claim charts that were submitted that demonstrate infringement risk. IBSC COO Noah Michelle submitted claims charts mapping 13 of the US patents directly to 11 statutory elements embedded in NRS 706. Precisely, this is 7061516A through K. This is technical evidence, this is not conjecture. And there was no rebuttal evidence submitted. Curb, Taxi Management, they submitted no expert testimony, they submitted no claims charts, they submitted no invalidity contentions, no technical analysis of even their own platforms. And in many cases, they admitted under oath, they didn't even review IBSC's pending patents. So again, while this is not a patent case per se, the claims charged that were submitted establish what is at the heart of this dispute and is a threat to the industry. And as appellate courts often remind us, attorney argument is not evidence. Also, we know patent risk is real, immediate and global because the statutory requirements embedded in NRS force operators to use this real-time data integrated system. We heard that the origination of the technology was born through a pilot program, developed in this precise jurisdiction, the requirements of which are embedded in statute. As J.J. Bell testified, Curb and Captain's systems perform the same process. Opponents offered no contrary technical evidence. We know the patent risk is real, immediate and global, and we know it's going to hurt because litigation costs and disruption would devastate the operators. We heard that the defense of a patent action, a single action, could cost $3 to $4 million. This was not rebutted. We heard that the potential damages with the six-year look back could be tens of millions of dollars. And we know multiple simultaneous suits could threaten industry collapse. And remember, you're tasked with ensuring uninterrupted service. There was not one single witness that challenged these figures. Instead, you heard some notion that there is a pledge for some litigation fund. We don't know that, that's not here today, the patent risk is real. And you know there's no collusion, you know the evolution of the 50 cent fee. You heard how this was negotiated at arm's length and how it represents the minimum necessary amount. And how do we know that there is no collusion and integrity in this process? You saw a letter dated four years ago in 2021 issued by IBSC. This matter only intensified because IBSC revived its enforcement efforts. And you heard from J.J. Bell how and why he negotiated with IBSC on behalf of multiple entities and engaged in often contentious discussions with IBSC. And again, my client Desert Cab didn't negotiate the fee, didn't set the fee nor influence its amount. And the fee itself is minimal and reasonable, it represents only 2% to 3% of the average fare. It avoids exposure of a much higher magnitude and preserves that uninterrupted service. It's also consistent with the prior authority approved surcharges throughout the last decade. Let me touch on a few arguments raised by Curb and Taxi Management in their closing briefs. Argument one, there's no proof of infringement. Again, infringement proof is not required in this rate case, only evidence of the risk is required. But even if it were, even if it were, again, we've got that detailed claim chart, we've got the testimony mapping it to the statutory requirements, and we have evidence that any compliance system likely uses these patented methods. Opponents produce nothing. Instead, we didn't look at the patents, but we just know we're not infringing. This is legally meaningless and factually unsupported. There are other argument in their closing briefs. Opposing providers say their tech doesn't infringe. Again, a belief is not evidence, belief is not evidence. Every opposing witness refused to describe their technologies due to the NDAs. They declined to analyze the IBSC patents, no tech testimony, no expert opinion and no documents. This authority cannot rely on naked unsupported opinions, especially when the sworn testimony demonstrates the opposite. Another argument in the opposition closing briefs. The fee shows collusion between Desert Cab, Captain and IBSC. Again, Desert Cab did not participate in these negotiations, did not negotiate with IBSC, set the amount, or even review royalty calculations. Captain and IBSC negotiated this at an adversarial posture for years. This is the opposite of collusion. The record actually shows division, shows disagreement and even competing interests. Also, this 25% tech allocation from the 50 cent fee is available to all providers. The operators had a full and meaningful opportunity to review, this was publicly noticed, and the amendments were also made public. There was nothing hidden, everything was done on the record with full hearing rights. And this chronological timeline, forget the progression of negotiations. That deposition testimony of Andrew Myers spells out how this matter continued to evolve, even from our initial hearing in February, and how this supports the amendment, both procedurally and substantively. Another argument raised, Captain wants this fee to fund its own operations, not to address infringement. Again, from the applicant's perspective, this fee is not for Captain, it's for the operators to apply it to its own tech service providers. Even if Captain were to benefit indirectly, this benefit is irrelevant under Nevada law. For example, for us attorneys, if state bar regulated what lawyers could charge and we use Westlaw, and we were to get a state bar subsidy for us to choose what electronic legal research provider we wanted to use. I, the attorney, provide that service to my clients. My client needs me to solve the problem, just like the transfer reporting public needs the operators to solve the problem. I, as the lawyer, am going to have to pay for Westlaw or LexisNexis no matter what, just like the operators are going to have to pay for that technology, no matter who provides it. Rate setting looks to what risk is to the operators, the public interest that is served, statutory compliance and safety and continuity of service, not to Captain's internal finances. In my example of Westlaw and LexisNexis, no one would look to Westlaw or LexisNexis's finances. Again, Captain's indemnification obligations do not solve the problem. Captain's resources, if those are depleted, all operators still stand to be sued. Opponents have not shown and they cannot show any improper benefit to Desert Cab. I do want to touch on the administrator's closing brief. In my view, it raised concerns, but didn't necessarily oppose the application. It focused on procedural irregularities and not substantive objectives, objections. And just, I wanted to put this out there, the brief was remarkably untimely. It was issued long after everyone else submitted their briefs. And while we would extend professional courtesies, none was ever asked. I think that lately come brief was, is prejudicial. Notwithstanding, I'll jump to the arguments that were made. One, the administrator was concerned with Captain's delay in notifying operators about the 2021 demand letter. This concern is directed at Captain, not the applicant. Moreover, there was sworn testimony that IBSC at that time didn't respond with the requested information from Captain. Also, delayed notice doesn't reduce the risk, doesn't eliminate patent rights, and it doesn't mitigate damage exposure. It does not change the current urgent circumstances. And this rate setting would be forward looking, the question is what protects the industry now? The pass-through fee does, nothing else. And the application amendment, the administrator challenges that, again, it was procedurally proper, publicly filed, supported by evolving evidence and subject to full hearing and cross-examination. No one's due process rights were implicated or prejudiced. And administrative proceedings routinely involve amended filings as the evidence develops. So now, why must the authority approve this pass-through fee? Without doing so, without this fee, every operator faces crippling litigation exposure. A single lawsuit could bankrupt a smaller operator, multiple lawsuits could collapse the industry. The statutory real-time data system is at risk. If tech providers are enjoined or incapacitated, the operators immediately fall out of compliance with NRS 706. Also, why you should approve this. The fee is modest and precisely tailored to the risk. It reflects months of negotiations and the lowest workable compromise. Evidence supporting this fee is overwhelming and unrebutted. And the public interest is strongly favored because the writing to public now depends on GPS accuracy, real-time tracking, data integrity, long haul prevention, and of course, passenger safety. At my first appearance before you, I did represent in my 26 years, this is the first and only matter that I've had before the Taxi Authority. I've observed that it is a close-knit collegial group of industry professionals, operators that work together to solve problems. So why is there a lack of uniformity here? And I submit this, Desert Cab's purpose is not to create friction or animosity with its colleagues or to create challenges for this board, all of whom Desert Cab respects immensely. So why did Desert Cab push this forward? The answer is rather simple, Desert Cab wants finality. Desert Cab wants elimination of this risk and to focus on what it does best. Operate taxi cabs and serve the writing public. Others that want to invite the fight are by way of analogy betting on the casino floor. But in this case, they're going to have to use markers, and they're teeing up the entire industry at large as its wager. The damages thought here are not only six years' look back, but the continued use of this patent technology. After everyone's known about this, it's been acknowledged and placed on the forefront, puts the industry in the crosshairs of what's called a willful violation. That exponentially enlarges the potential damages. And this issue isn't a quick roll of the dice, it's a long drawn out multi-series Texas Oldham that will only require an exorbitant amount of resource and capital, but also time, energy and human capital taken away not only from Desert Cab, but the operators. And those of us that litigate know that even if you win at the end, you and your client has lost years of your life, that mental cloud of litigation that manages to eclipse daily aspects of your life, and of course, the money that you spend fighting. Because even if you're declared the victor, you're not always recouping every dime you spent. So in conclusion, the rate adjustment satisfies all criteria, it's supported by evidence. It's here to maintain safe, adequate and efficient uninterrupted taxi service. And based on the evidentiary record, Desert Cab respectfully requests the authority approve this 50 cent per trip pass through software license fee. Approval is not only justified, it is necessary. I want to thank the board, the staff, my colleagues, for all their efforts and professionalism throughout this process, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board. I do not want to eat the arguments in our closing brief or the comments from counsel for the applicant. I do want to point out a few points relating to patents. I know this isn't a patent case, and I will be brief about it, but there's a couple of issues that were raised by Taxi Management in its closing brief. One is, has to do with the draft patent licensing, as we go to individual operating companies. That's exhibit B to exhibit 20 case. So it was attached to the settlement agreement with IBSC between Captain and IBSC. And Taxi Management and Curb criticized the agreement that the operators would get because it does not contain an indemnification from IBSC for patent claims brought by owners of prior art patents. Those, that type of indemnification is never in license agreements. The reason it's not there is that you'd be asking the patentee, in this case, to go through 1,000 prior art patents and articles and uses and determine there's an indemnification if any of those companies or individuals brought an action against an operator, it doesn't happen. And there was no witness who testified that this is ordinary practice to include it, it's never included. I've been dealing with these agreements for the past 30 years, and I've never seen an indemnification clause like that. Whether I'm on the side of the patent owner or the side of the licensor, it's just not something that you find in them. Mr. Duan, CTO of Curb. That's a lot to say, excuse me, in his depth, in his testimony, there's one paragraph about conclusion, why he, he just says why Curb Mobility, he doesn't believe it infringes any of the patents. But he couldn't give any details in his depth and in his hearing. He declined to testify about the scope and findings. about the scope and findings of his work with Patent Council. That's a day three hearing, pages 22 and 23. He indicated that he hadn't even read the pending patent applications in response to a question by one of the board members. So what you have from, and Mr. Dwan is experienced. He note, he is a member of a company that is involved in patent monetization. He so testified. He knows that if you had a position of non-infringement, he knows how to articulate it. He knows what he could have done. And you don't have to waive attorney-client privilege to put in a chart that reads on the patent claims and each element to say why there's no infringement. It set forth in the, in the patent rules for a district court here in Nevada. He could have followed that. He knows what to do, and he didn't do it. That should tell you all you need to know about his one-sentence conclusion of alleged non-infringement. Mr. George Ztrip testified, submitted prefiled testimony deposition, and he testified at the hearing. But Mr. George is claiming at, on behalf of Ztrip, that he is going to a different provider, service provider, and he has to deal with the agreement that he has with, that he, Ztrip has with Captain. But in his deposition, he refused to disclose anything about his discussions, negotiations, offer, or contract with Autocab. Autocab is apparently the company that he, Ztrip, has retained to replace Captain as technology provider. We don't have any information on it. And he said, "I can't disclose it because I'm under nondisclosure agreement." So you don't know, you have no way of comparing testimony. You have no way of knowing if it's superior or different or even exactly the same. His testimony is conclusory, it's hearsay, and it's inadmissible. And if he relied on the NDA and said he could, even though there's a protective order in place, and he could have used it to provide this testimony under protective order, and all of the parties would have followed with the confidentiality requirements, he didn't do that. His testimony should be excluded, shouldn't be considered at all. It's also the case about whether service, service providers can opt in or out. They can, they can make the decision. Captain, if the board approves this fee increase, they're going to proceed with an agreement with IBSC, similar to what you see in Exhibit 20. But, and all service providers, including Autocab, are permitted the same opportunity and the same rights. They can opt in or opt out. It's their decision to make. I don't know how anything could be fairer than that. Would seem to me, as counsel to companies that get involved in these disputes, that it would be in Autocab's interest to take advantage of the settlement and license protections. But it's their decision to make. And nothing that the board determines forces them to go one way or the other. In the Taxi Management, Curr Mobility closing brief, there's three or four pages devoted to the claim of invalidity of the IBSC patents. And there's nothing, they're just conclusory. There's no argument there. There's no specific claims analysis. If you're going to assert invalidity, you have to look at each claim and each element of each claim of each of the five issued patents. I think that's 111 claims, and there are elements between the claims. You don't hear, there's no discussion of any of that in the closing brief. And the one thing, and while district courts decide issues of validity and infringement, the statutory presumption is, is of that an issued patent is valid. It's 35 USC 282. Patents shall be presumed valid. Each claim of a patent, whether independent, dependent, or multiple dependent, shall be presumed valid independently of the validity of the other claims.
Question again?
35 USC 282. Presumption of validity. That presumption applies all the patents of, that are at issue in IVCs. All of the claims in the IBSC patents are presumed valid. And I, one issue that I do want to address that I don't think is just referenced too much in the closing briefs. And that's the length of time that these patents have. And I think there's some confusion based on some testimony that it's 20 years from the date of issuance. And I think Mr. Mazzell indicated there was an application that just was, came to issuance, I think during the hearings that we had. But that's not correct. The correct scope, expiration is in, and I'm going to use the site, 35 USC 154. Contents and term of patents. The 20 years is from the date, not, is from the date of the application, the priority date, not from the date of issuance. And Exhibit 19, the chart that our office prepared, has the issue dates of the five patents and the priority dates of the patent. And the expiration dates of the patents are not 20 years from 2024. The expiration dates for the earliest patent are September 2nd, 2031. And the latest date is March 3, 33, 2033. All of the others have expiration dates in 19, in 2031. And the, the application that I think became an issued patent in September expires in September 2032. So the, it's depending on which one you look at, it's five, seven years to term expiration. Five to seven or five to eight. 31, 33, it's early 33, March 33, seven and a half. But it's not 20 years from 23 or 2024. And after the dates of expiration of these patents, there's no longer the ability of the patentee to enforce them. And he, the company is free to practice them as they wish. That's, that's the law at that point.
So I, I want to ask a question on that.
Sure.
This is one of the issues I was struggling. So the testimony that somehow there was some leapfrogging, that's how I interpreted this testimony, leapfrog and keeps pushing it out, and the ultimate exposure is 20 years. That testimony is just incorrect as a matter of law.
I know the testimony you're referring to.
Yeah.
It is incorrect, and I wanted to correct the record.
As a matter of law.
As a matter of law, okay. It's not my opinion. This is what the law says in the statute that I quoted. And those priority dates are from the patent themselves. Look at the patent, Google patents, you look at them, it has the expiration date right on them. So there's no guesswork. You know exactly what it is. Dates I gave you are directly from the patents, on Google patents. I want to talk about a few points on public interest.
What?
Public. Somebody, oh, sorry about that.
I just, they just were admitted and.
Mr. Bell testified at, at the hearing on day two about his view of the benefits, pass-through fee for every operator in Clark County and every service provider providing technology services to each proprietor. And he is of the firm view, as is Mr. Myers in his testimony, that the ability of tech companies and operators to provide first-rate technology without fear of avoiding 111 claims across the patents and another 30 to 40 claims on the pending applications benefits everyone. And there's no testimony to the contrary on that. But there's, there are a few reasons why the pass-through fee is in the public interest and what would happen if it was not approved. This, I don't think, is fleshed out too much in the closing briefs. Cost of defense. Bill George of Ztrip claims that he, his company pays $730,000 in fees to the technology provider for his entire fleet. And I believe, he says, he covers 38 municipalities in 20, across 20 states. It's a pretty significant organization. Pays $730,000 to his tech provider. That entire revenue wouldn't cover a single year of defending a patent infringement case. So if that technology company had to put a defense in place for Ztrip, all of the revenue in any year would go to defense costs. These patent cases, one for three to four years. How is that a business that would ever work for Autocab or whatever technology provider? Ztrip chooses. They're in the same position as Captain. The cost of defense, even if you are of the firm view that you can invalidate 111 claims, that's a daunting test. How can you afford it? It's just, it's, from a business point of view, it just doesn't work. So in addition to finding a way to defend costs, there's also the problem about what happens to the technology provider in the middle of a case. You sued for patent infringement. Here's what occurs. The, the, the company who's being, whose technology is at issue has to look at its technology and see how it reads on the patents. Is there anything that they can move out? Is there anything they can remove? They sit down with Patent Council, lawyers like me and, and our team, and we go through all the claims, all their technology, to see what they can deal with. There's mitigation that occurs. It's not done in a vacuum. And then the other problem happens, is there's two pending applications here. And patentees keep applications open while they are prosecuting patent infringement cases. They do it for two reasons. One is they can file amended claims. When they learn what the defenses are of a particular defendant or technology provider, they adjust. And the, the amended claims get more specific, and they deal exactly on that. And that's a problem for every technology provider. It's Autocab's problem if it engages in litigation. It's Captain's problem if it engages in litigation. And then there's the issue of the operators. And I think I have said this in the closing brief, but it does bear repeating. An operator is, can be held liable for direct patent infringement, even if it doesn't have anything to do with the development of the technology. If it uses the technology, it is liable for patent infringement under the patent statute. An indemnification, and they have to defend their position. So if you're the patentee, one strategy you could use is sue operators. You choose which ones and in which order and at what time, and don't sue the, the providers. Then the operators have to defend the case, and you have the indemnification issues with the providers, whether it's Captain or Autocab. And imagine what effect that has on the management and operation of operators in this county if that occurs. Approval of this pass-through fee puts that risk in place, gets rid of it. And another strategy that patentees can use is to pursue the smallest and weakest operators first, defendants. That's a strategy that, you know, patentees can use. So that puts all the risk on a small, smaller company, maybe not one of the bigger operators. They have to defend the case. They've got the same defense cost, but their revenues are much smaller. And the fees they pay to Captain or anyone else are much smaller. How do they afford that? What's going to happen with those cases? It puts the operators at risk. Then the operators have to be, you know, look, looking out for themselves. Do they drop out? Does there consolidation? Then the small operators afford it? These are all issues that are going to recur if patent litigation starts, if this pass-through fee is not approved. Thank you very much.
Here we go, let's get a side of the apple. I'm sure if this, if any board member has horses.
I don't have a question for him. I have a question for you.
Heck.
Oh, oh, are you coming over here?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
We can't worry.
I just wanted to ask a question. I just wanted a little bit more clarity in terms of our decision in terms of listening to this case.
So.
It was referenced that this is not a patent case. But I just have the feeling that we're going to continue, continually hear patent all day. All right. And so I, I asked that because I wanted to, to see what are we basing our decision on? Because based on what I read, you know, we're looking at either the whole scope of this case, or are we just looking at the infringements or impacts that it would have on the operators or? But because I, I just feel like patent is going to continue to be the, the highlight of, of the skeleton today.
I will do my level best to provide thoughts and directions when we bring this back for deliberation, but not at this point.
Okay.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Any questions?
Yes. So what happens if the service providers opt out? They opt out. They do not get the benefit of the settlement or release agreement with IBSC. They would still be potentially liable for patent infringement claims. And IBSC, if it so chose, could sue them at any time.
So follow-up, but it doesn't affect the 37 and a half cents that goes to IBSC. That so, so on, right?
So, so what would happen? Let's take Autocab, just as hypothetical example. They don't opt in, and they stay out. So their technology does not get the protection of the settlement agreement. The operators that they serve do not get the license that's attached to Exhibit 20. And what they would do, because IBSC would have been collect, would have been paid the 37 and a half cents for that operator's rides, that would be a credit that Autocab would get in a subsequent litigation and, and the operator that it serves. So if it was, you know, $200,000 or something like that, they would get a credit for that. And if there were any judgment, it would be subtracted against the award.
It's a different question, though. So the scope of the, the agreement being entered into or potentially being entered into, because we don't have a signed agreement yet, right?
It's conditional. That's true.
Is limited to only Nevada?
It can't be expanded, but it's limited to Nevada because of, we're in this proceeding here. But the settlement and the licensing agreement applies to all operators.
Does it apply to operators in Reno?
I don't see why it wouldn't, but that, that's one of the issues. I, I think it would, and I would, if, if, if the fee is approved, that would be one of the details in final agreement. So they should cover. So they should cover the entire state, in my view.
How does that happen when we don't have jurisdiction?
Well, it's not. It's not the, the, the board's direction on that. But that would be what I would expect to see in the final agreement between IVSC and Captain. There's no reason to exclude the Reno operators.
Wouldn't that be rate making subjects of the TSA?
NT.
NT.
I mean, I'm sorry, MTA.
There would be.
Not TSA, sorry.
It's an, it's an open issue to answer your question, but if, if. It, I would be in favor of extending it to Reno. But there would be proceedings to get the fee approved on that basis, if it were going in that direction. But that is not dealt with in this exhibit twenty, one way or the other.
So the, the way I understood the testimony, moving on to the next subject. Way I understood the testimony of the twenty year application or expiration of. Was that, and it appears that because there's five different patents that have been approved. That they're changing or evolving. And that the sub, the fifth is a. Generational, uh, version of the first. Am I misunderstanding that? And if I am, dissuade me of it.
I think in part, five issued patents have, uh, an expiration date that is fixed by law, doesn't change.
Not my question. So the patent number one is one plus one equals two. Patent number two is one plus in parentheses, three minus two equals two. Version number three is blank, but, and you see where I'm going, right? Okay. So they're still giving you a patent based upon the originality and everything else that you have to show in terms of a patent and that sort of thing. Is that what we're going to keep dealing with? Are we going to have version six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve consistently going on forever?
Before you answer that question, let me, can I just add?
Yeah.
Sure. So what I'm. Similarly. We either have five or six. Issues, six now, right?
Six now.
Yeah. Cause one came down while we were in here. But we, uh, your calculus of seven and a half years. Doesn't include those that have not been issued yet.
Actually it does.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Because you went by application date and that's your correct analysis.
And we have the application, there's two pending applications. One that issued while we were in hearing. That expires September twenty thirty two.
That's, so the one that was issued, that was issued during the hearing is the thirty two.
Correct.
Okay.
And the other patent, which is not yet right for allowance. Is application has. A priority date that is two weeks earlier than the one that just became issued, so.
So not material.
It doesn't extend it any further.
So my. It's not a question to you, it's a statement for other counsel when they come to the podium. Are you all in agreement that the term of the rate? This is very unclear in the record. The term of the rate is seven and a half years. And actually. Probably less than that because it's going down at some.
Every, every month.
Right. We don't have a, we don't have that math in front of us. Um, so we want to make sure we have that clear on the record.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Bureo? I have one.
I'm, I'm going to think I've answered my last chairman's, the last question.
Okay.
Oh, yes. About sort of the building on claims part of it. The. When you look, first of all, there's only two pending applications and.
Well, there's only one pending.
Well, there's one pending application. And priority date makes a difference. So if there were a new app, to, to speak hypothetically. If IVSC filed a new application tomorrow. It would have priority date of tomorrow. Not twenty twenty twelve, twenty twelve or twenty eleven. So all of the prior art of the last thirteen years would have to be addressed in that. From patent lawyer's perspective, that would not be a promising. Application of time and fees. For the pending application. Because there's too much prior art to deal with over the time.
Okay, talk to me like I'm not a patent lawyer. What do you mean by prior art?
So.
Talking about my math equation? Or are you talking about something else?
I'll use your math equation, so.
Okay.
All of the prior art, the patents, I call them prior, all of the issued patents are themselves prior art. So whatever the claims were on there, one plus one plus two or three or whatever, however you got. You, you have to go beyond that and say there's something novel and non-obvious. That's a patent, right? And what it means is it's something that a, a person of skill in the art, like Mr. Bordenaro. Would not ordinarily look as a normal improvement based on the current technology. It has to be a dramatically different choice. And it can't be obvious from the perspective of one skilled in the art. This is an issue that gets litigated in patent cases. So when I say it would be, if you had an application that was filed tomorrow with a priority date tomorrow. You'd have to deal with all of the providers' technology that's been used in the last thirteen years. And is there something that is completely new and non-obvious that could be covered? That's the only, the only subject matter that would be possible to be issued.
Okay.
Very limited at this point. And the, the pen, there's one pending application. Uh, it's going through prosecution right now. I think it's faced. A, a rejection. And a notice of appeal was filed by IVSC. I think that happened just after hearings in September. But they did follow. Right, but that's, it, it's a public record and that's, that's where that stands.
Where you leave, so remember, remember weekly's question. While I will give other. Suggested guidance. This discussion of how long into the future is relevant to us. Because we're trying to determine if we approve a rate, how long does that rate last? And so we're, that's being driven by patent law, but not. We're not making a determination of how long, just hearing that's how long the term of this rate. One, one last item, I want to give you, uh, an opportunity on, um. Amongst your colleagues, and this is not a criticism. You raised today and a number of times hearsay as an objection. Hearsay is not an objection under the Nevada, uh, uh, National Strike Procedure Act. Unless you make a record at the time. You make it, but the. Hearsay testimony is so incredibly speculative. That no reasonable person would rely upon it in any of their personal affairs. And I'm going to allow you to, you said we should strike Mr. George's testimony essentially. Which was not a motion made timely at, at the time it was given, so it's too late now. But I just want to allow you to elaborate if you want to. If you really believe you have a very restricted hearsay objection because. I'm, I'm troubled that there is one.
With respect to Mr. George, which is really where I have a problem is. He was asked to provide information about what Auto Cab was offering. What was his technology? What, what did it look like? He apparently was going to receive an offer and he, he wouldn't disclose it. He said, I can't disclose any of it under NDA. Uh, and I take him at his word that there's an NDA in place. And I pointed out to him and his, and counsel that, you know, the protective order allows. You know, uh, matters to be kept confidential and if he wanted to take advantage of that, uh, he could. And I invited him to do so. Set his deposition. And he never did that. So what we have here is a statement from a conclusion, regardless of whether it's hearsay or not. That he has a, a, a new provider who provides superior service. There's just no proof of it. And it fails because he didn't come forward with anything. So the statement. What I have a, a new provider provides superior service is not supported by the evidence. Could have done it, could have submitted it under protective order, he didn't do it. And his testimony should be given little or no weight because of that voluntary decision.
We can. This is not to you, this is to the board. Uh, we may, uh, take. Into consideration inferences from conduct. And so. Consider Mr. Bureo's position, or you can consider whether or not the testimony given as a whole. Um, shows by inference, um, believability, uh, as to what course of action to. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell Gill.
Thank you, Dr.
Tomlinson. Morning.
Get off, you get off easy, he did the heavy lifting.
Nice to go third. Um, good morning, um, please, Chair and members of the board. My name is Neil Tomlinson, I'm here today representing IVSC, IPLLC. Um, I just want to start with a couple of the questions that the Chair posed and that came up, um. From others is that with regard to the seven and a half year, we would stipulate to that. Uh, we believe that that's fair. And please wonder, you know, the uncertainty of everything, but that's, that's a reasonable calculation. Uh, there was mention of whether it would be statewide. Uh, I believe that, um, operators could simply change, change their tariff in northern Nevada. Reno came up, I believe that they could change their tariff at the NTA if they so chose to. Um, so anyway, I want to, want to back up though, and I think it's important for everybody to kind of know the genesis. Of how we got here. Back in two thousand and four, I was retained by Charlie and Phyllis Freyas. To be counsel for Freyas Holding Company, which at that time owned seven of their transportation companies. So I began representing for both the Tax Cab Authority and the Nevada Transportation Authority. And during those early years when I represented them. They were trying to come up with solutions to their problems internally for their companies, providing service here in Las Vegas. And the genesis of that was that they created a company called FTI, it's Freyas Transportation Infrastructure. So they created this company and they started developing software for their own use initially. And they did that, and they solved a lot of their own problems and the company's profitability soared. Because they were more efficient. They could do jobs faster, they could get things done quicker, less people. What technology is all about. And so the genesis of that. Goes up to then around twenty ten, twenty eleven, they created two products, two main products that were. Pilot programmed at both state agencies, the NTA and the TA. It was, there was a regulator interface product called Ride Integrity. That product also was implemented in San Francisco at the SFMTA. And all the vehicles under their jurisdiction operated under Ride Integrity. Basically gave the regulator real time database and, and a dashboard of every vehicle. At every time, everything that vehicle was doing. And so these two products were developed to solve, initially to solve their own internal problems, right? They wanted to get better as a company and they did that. So as things went forward. They wanted to improve technology in transportation in Nevada. And so I appeared personally and for the company many times at the legislature. We had multiple different technology changes that were made to the statutes over the year. Uh, over, over the years, uh, over section, uh, I'm sorry, uh, chapter seven oh six, uh, for both the NTA and the TA. As things progressed, they decided, well, we should patent this to protect it because we came up with this. And the second product I didn't mention was, was Ride Genie, which was an app interface that allowed. This is, you know, for Uber, allowed people to hail a taxi by using the Ride Genie app. And that was also pilot programmed here. So eventually the patent, uh, idea came up. And so patent lawyers were hired. They were developed, you know, it's an extensive process, you don't just file a patent application in a day. This thing, you know, you have to develop these and have something that's novel. So that's what happened, they were developed, they were submitted, eventually over the years, they started getting approved. And so as we come in here today. Somebody can say, oh, well, we had that before you, or we invented it. Well, you don't have a patent. We invented it and got a patent. And so there's no other patent lawyer here that has this, we have. And those patents have been issued. And so I think that's important to know that, you know, and the reason why. And by the way, the patents are good throughout the United States. Okay, we, this, we started enforcement right here because this is where they were developed. This is where they were born. And we don't want to sue. The company does not want to sue the operators here, and that's why. We tried to work out an agreement that would be reasonable to everybody and fair and good for the public. And so that's what brought us here today. In the event we are forced to litigate and, and, you know, which we will throughout the country, there's litigation funding companies lined up. Wanting us to take the money to go litigate this across the country. And we, we will have to do that in many jurisdictions.
Tomlinson, that's not in evidence.
No, that's, I understand, I understand, but I think it's good to understand the full picture of, of how we got here.
We need to understand the evidence, not.
Understood. So, so the evidence, and this is exhibit seven and eight, Mr. Norma Self. He talks about the breakdown of the proposed charge. Twelve and a half cents, the technology provider, thirty seven and a half inch cents to Freyas. Mr. Maceal's testimony also cited some royalty guides. And the range of infringement rates that are potentially available under the law. And in accordance with Mr. Maceal's testimony are three to twelve percent. As we sit here right now today, the thirty seven and a half cents is well below that, below the three, the lowest level. If we litigate, we won't be seeking fifty cents, we won't be seeking thirty seven and a half cents, we'll be seeking two dollars and forty cents. The maximum that we can see, obviously. And so, and we'll also have a six-year look back potential. And then we also have the whole component of willful infringement. So all of that adds up to. Millions upon millions of dollars, we won't be seeking this same deal anywhere else, I can promise you that. We want to have a good industry here, we want this technology to be used, we want it to benefit all the players here, all the stakeholders. The public, of course, first, the operators benefit, the board can benefit, everybody benefits. And I want to give you an example, a real life example of what this technology has, has done. There's a, there's a provision called seven oh six eight eight three six subsection five. And this provision, for the first time, I believe it was twenty eleven, was. Allows for the electronic sealing. Of the taxi meters. Back in the old days, if there was a rate change, say you had an F one charge. It would, the, the inspectors would have to go out from the agency and personally update the meter, unseal it, change it, drive it, make sure it's, it's accurate and reseal it. Okay, all that's gone now because of technology. And so it can be done electronically now, it could be done like that. The problem, the way I see it that we have here that we're trying to solve is that currently. The, the, what's being provided to the public is not compensable. They're not paying what they're getting. Getting the benefit of this technology, it had for many years without that cost being fully charged to the public. And I think that that's important because this directly, and it's all through our testimony. this directly, and it's all through our testimony, it's all through in my closing brief, directly benefits the public, that's who's getting the benefit of this. They're getting better service, we've got lost and found issues, accident issues, all that data is collected, stored and preserved for their benefit. For you as a regulator, your benefit as well. Checks everybody, keeps the whole, everything level because it's all tracked, it's all real time data that's stored and available for investigation if there's ever an issue and that comes up all the time. As far as the policy, what is the policy for the fee that we're requesting, the charge? Ms. Premzrout mentioned it and I want to reiterate it because it's so important. Policy has already been defined by Nevada Legislature. When they created Tax Cab Authority and then Transportation Authority, they enacted NRS 706.151 and it's called Legislative Declaration of Purpose. And that tells you as a regulator, what is it you're supposed to do? And what I think is the applicable provision for this case is subsection C is to provide for fair and impartial regulation to promote safe, adequate, economic and efficient service and to foster sound economic conditions in motor transportation. That's what you are supposed to do as a board. And that, we believe that fits exactly with what we're trying to do here because all of, there's been testimony to all of these things being done in the course of providing this transportation to the public. So I think that's very key. If you want to look at similar fees and charges, you know, it's pretty easy, look at your hotel room bill. Look at your utility bill, look at your, you know, I'll just read from you, Las Vegas Valley Water District. There's excessive use charge, commodity charge, infrastructure charge, reliability surcharge. There's all kinds of surcharges, even in our industry, you've got the credit card fee, you've got special event fees like F1, EDC, all kinds of different charges, fuel surcharge, all of these charges get passed along. And then unfortunately, in this case, to date, they have not been. And so that's why this fifty cent came. And that's, we're not asking for the two dollars and forty cents, which we could and will in litigation if we have to. But we're asking for a total of fifty cents, broken out as the application has been amended to twelve and a half cents and the thirty seven and a half, yeah, thirty seven and a half cents. With respect to the patents themselves, you know, it's an unavoidable issue, you know, we have to understand why we're asking for it, you have to understand the patent side of it. Obviously not a patent case, but it's, you have to at least grasp the basics of it to understand. And I think it's important to note, if you look at the testimony provided by the opposing intervenors, not one of them hired a patent attorney to do a review of the patents, both the issued and the pending. They didn't do that. YCS, the Taxi Management, their sole reliance on a patent attorney was they had a free consultation and they, from that consultation, they believed that they were not infringing. Makes absolutely no sense. There's not any real opposition to this. And what we would like to propose is either an opt-in or an opt-out. And of course, this would be subject to the applicant agreeing to it, it's their application. But as a board, what I believe, based on the record that's before you and the evidence that's been submitted, is that if you, you could grant Desert's application, I believe there's really no real debate as to them satisfying what they need to, to have this approved. You could grant their application as to them and allow others, you could, or could decide whether opt-in or opt-out makes more sense. But we have also the provision, you know, rates typically are uniform, have been for years. But there's an exception to that in the code, NAC 706.471 and it says, except upon a showing that the public interest requires otherwise, the rates, charges or fares of all holders of a certificate in a county will be uniform. So if the public interest requires it, rates do not have to be uniform. And so we would suggest that a opt-in procedure would be available, maybe thirty days would be a window of time. You could grant the application as to the applicant as a cab and have a thirty day window, forty five day window, whatever you think is reasonable, where they could either opt-in or opt-out. That way, if you don't want to do it, you want to roll the dice, let them roll the dice. Fine, that's fine. But don't punish the applicant who's come here trying to solve a problem that faces everyone. Desert Cab sees, you know, they've lived this with me through all these years at these agencies. They know what the technology is, they know it's been demonstrated, it's been proven and now it's been patented. So they understand the risk and I think others do too, but you know, why avoid cost, you know, as long as you can and not agree to anything? Okay, fine. But Desert Cab has an application here that has been checked, all the boxes, all the boxes have been checked. Testimony has been made, the record has been made and there's not a good reason to deny the application. And so to allow others to do what they want, I think you can do both here. You can grant the applicant's request and then allow the others to opt-in or opt-out, however you decide, you know, that makes sense. I think that that is really a fair and reasonable solution to everybody. And I'm certainly available to answer any questions that you might have.
I do have one question.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. So can you explain how the opt-in out? I assume if there was, if someone opted out, they would be, they would be subject to infringement litigation.
Well, absolutely, because if they, if they don't opt-in, then they're not going to get the benefit of the protective agreement.
Okay, so can you explain how that would satisfy the obligation we have under 706.151 sub C that you mentioned earlier?
Well, look, everything's not always cut and dry, right? I mean, it's a complicated industry, everybody has different challenges. I think that you're giving them the opportunity. I mean, my personal opinion is it should be forced on everybody because I think that's what's best for the public. But that's my personal opinion. Okay, what I'm saying is providing an alternative if others don't feel that way. That you can, you know, there's all kinds of different statutes and laws are passed that have opt-in procedures. For example, one I've recently been involved with up in Wyoming is gaming. It's a county by county opt-in or opt-out, right, depending on what the exact issue is. Some of them require, what's that?
City of Boulder City?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tool that's been utilized for, you know, many, many years. And that's why I'm mentioning it. We, of course, think it should be granted, we think it's better to have rates all uniform. That's what we, that's what we're asking for, but we're asking alternatively that you consider granting and doing an opt-in or opt-out. And, and, and you know, the opt-in, whether you do an opt-in or opt-out depends on whether you want the rates uniform, right? I mean, so if you say, okay, you, we're going to grant the application and if you don't want to participate, you can opt-out. So you've set a uniform rate with, with an opt-out and then they can get out if they don't want that. The opposite is you're setting rates non-uniform with an opt-in, which could then create uniform rates if everybody opted. My guess is if it's a, it's a, either way, you're going to see other operators opt-in. That's my guess. So I use it, I offer it as an alternative prayer for relief.
So how do you jive that with what you just talked about 706-471, the uniformity of rates?
Well.
One second, here, let me just give you more of what I'm thinking of for everybody. If, if, that's a reg we have to follow. And if, if we're doing it as an opt-in and opt-out, and that's why I asked the question earlier about opt-in and opt-out, what the effect would be? How can we possibly have a uniformity of grades if we're allowing other providers to opt-out?
Well, the statute, as I read it, 151, which is your declaration of purpose, right, what you're supposed to do, it doesn't say uniform. 151, what says uniform is the code provision, NAC 706-471 says that rates should be uniform, except upon a showing that the public interest requires otherwise. So I think it gives you that discretion. Like I said, our, our request is it be granted. We think that the evidence is clearly supported, substantial evidence. But alternatively, we propose the opt-in, opt-out. We agree that, we think 151 should be guiding principle, and we do believe that rates should be uniform. And so we, that's why we requested that you would grant it, but it's just an alternative argument that we're offering.
So, and just, just so we're clear and it's on the record, it's forced, and our NAC 706-471-3 says, except upon a showing that the public interest requires otherwise, the rates, charges or fees of all holders of a certificate in a county will be uniform. So I don't, you, you've seen it, other people who come to these hearings have seen it, that Chair Reiser and I go back and forth on what the regs say and how they're worded and everything else. I, I don't see that reg as giving us the ability for opt-in or opt-out. So again, if this, if this agreement is built on some sort of opt-in or opt-out, then we need to address that. And I, I need to know what your thinking is of how we address that.
Well, just like you said, if people can hear the evidence and look at the law and have a different opinion, that's why we have a board, right? And that's why there's a vote, not all votes are uniform, they're not all unanimous, right? So I, I think that that's exactly why, why I'm proposing this and mentioning it. Because I think that it's fair to read 151 and 471 just the way you're doing it. I think that that's a fair interpretation and I agree with it. However, the other board members may not. And so, you know, that's why we're offering it as an alternative proposition.
So my, or was I just tailing off of JD?
No, you can.
Okay.
I don't, JD told me he was done.
No, I'm done.
Don't go for it.
Okay, so tell me how you're calculating the 240 is what you're going to ask for.
You mean, you have to look it?
Yep.
So.
That's not in evidence. I.
No, it is, it is actually.
I thought it was like 120 or.
Well, so.
That's why I'm asking, as I looked at exhibit seven and eight, I, I see the testimony about fifty cents and how it was calculated and everything else. I didn't see 240 in there, so if it is in there, that's what I'm asking you to.
Well, so the royalty guides that are referenced by witness Noah Maceau in exhibit seven and eight talk about the three to 12% range.
But Mr. Thompson, 240 is your calculation?
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, and I think you have to keep in mind, okay? That's part of it.
That's your testimony of how you use that information.
Three, 12%, we would be seeking the maximum we would be available.
I might have calculated.
12%.
And that's what I get.
Plus willful infringement, plus a six-year clawback.
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Yeah.
Yeah, an IVSC 003 of exhibit seven, it has a software and you have ranges for patent claims or whatever that are, what does it say? Hold on, let's make sure we're clear. Patent royalty rates vary significantly across the industry. Benchmarking against industry-specific royalty guides is crucial when negotiating licensing agreements. Below our updated average royalty rates by industry based on LES, KT Mine and Business Valuation Resources BBR reports. And then there's a chart and that page is 002, then on 003, you get the software and it's a zero to 12 and you're seeing the average fare is twenty dollars, type 12% is 240.
Yeah.
Okay. So then.
I think, you know, my point is trying to show that it's a reasonable number that's been proposed.
We're lawyers, we know that, I mean, reason is up to, you know, what we're here to do and make that determination. So the other examples that you gave is the hotel room bill and you're talking about resort fees?
Well, there's all kinds of different fees. I mean, we, as a society, we, we face fees everywhere we go, right? Tipping is a whole nother thing, right? But every, yesterday I got gas and to use a debit card versus a credit card, it was going to cost me thirty five extra cents. I got to opt-in, right, and take it. Then I got the gas pumped. Well, actually it came before, but you know, I'm not going to drive to another gas station after I pulled up and stopped. So, you know, we, we, all consumers face it every day and, you know, it, it has, the problem we have here is it's, what's being provided is not being compensated for. That's, that's the problem we have. We've got technology that's been developed, has been in use, but the charges haven't kept up with that. And so all these surcharges and fees we see from, you know, all industries, whether it be here in Las Vegas or otherwise, it's all to make sure, or at least an attempt by the company to get compensated for what they're providing, right?
Okay, and then the other example you gave was the water bill and then they have that excess fees that Las Vegas Valley Water District is charging for excess use. And that, that's being litigated, right? And because that is a not-for-profit entity that is earning a profit based upon an exemplary fee that they imposed by this type of procedure. Just as an example, right? So then you got our special event charges and everything else. And I'm, and I'm trying to make sure, and I'm talking about these things because I want you to make sure that I have the correct way of thinking of this process and then by example, what you were talking about. So the special event charges, it's my understand, it's not my understanding, the reason why I voted for them was because and to show that we were trying to support the industry and help them to gain employees and everything else. And there was significant evidence and testimony that was brought forth as to those issues. I am still having the problem with even the testimony that's been presented and that's why I'm giving you the opportunity, because you're the patent holder, to tell me, why shouldn't the industry just go and contract with some other provider of this type of data and everything else? I get the look back, the look back's there, it's done. You know, whether or not anybody's liable for that in terms of a look back, that's for somebody else to determine and I don't think it's this board, right? So what is your best argument to say why that this isn't the best interest of the public?
I think it's absolutely the best interest of the public because they're the ones that have the direct benefit of this, that they use it, although they don't see it necessarily, they've got the protection of it. For example, they lost and found is an easy one, right? They know which cab they were in, they know where they went, they know where they came from, where they were dropped off, all because of the real time data that's coming out through the technology from the vehicle. That's a benefit to them. They're getting the rate that's being monitored to make sure that they're being charged the right rate. That's all done through the cloud meter or smart meter or whatever you want to call it. Not the old solid state meter that we used to have for, you know, decades. That's a benefit that they're getting. If there's an accident, there's real time speed data, location data, all that data is being stored, extracted and stored and is available if there's an issue. And so they get the benefit of that too. There's also part of the technology that helped get the taxis faster to where they should be, where there's a need for them. You know, as opposed to fifty cabs at one taxi stand and ten in another and there's no need for all that. The technology helps distribute that and make sure this riding public can get a ride when they need it.
So I have following up on that. The traveling public is getting those services today through Captain, Curd or any other technology provider. You agree with that?
I believe absolutely.
Your point is they're not paying the actual market price that should be recovered for that service.
I'm saying that, yeah, they're paying substantially below market and would still be below market if this application were approved.
But that's because the, the value of the, of the IVSC patents have not been monetized yet in the fee that the technology provider has a contract with the carrier to provide.
Correct.
Well, I I would argue that that's
I'm just asking what his argument is, not our argument.
I'm going to ask him if his answer is based on the fact that IVSC hasn't been compensated yet. And if they had, would your opinion still be the same that general overall rate was not sufficient? That somehow the public was being undercharged?
I'll give you, I'll give you my argument. My argument is, we believe that our portfolio of patents, all of the issued patents and all the pending patents apply throughout the United States because they're United States only patents. And they they will apply to every operator in every jurisdiction. We believe that the patent portfolio is that strong. And we have a lot of support for it. I mean, obviously, there's patent lawyers, the patent lawyers that you use to get the patents to maintain the patents, and you've got patent lawyers who are the enforcement side of it, right?
I understand. I I just want to, I want to be very clear for for the board. This there's two different things being said here. One is that a rate rate increase is being requested specifically to compensate IVSC for um, technology that it invented.
Thirty seven point five cents.
Right, but but what Mr. Tomlinson just said was that generally, regardless of that issue, the taxi riding public is being undercharged. And and I think these are two very, very different justifications for rate increase. So so I I think we're, I think we're a little off topic if your position is.
My question, and I think Vice Chair Graff's questions were generated by the argument we heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you're, I I think, can I suggest park that car in the parking lot till we get to deliberation?
Sure.
What one I I want to just give you the opportunity again because you raised the argument. And further to Vice Chair Graffs, I see absolutely no precedential value to the position advocated by the applicant that we have granted surcharges related to events. A totally different public policy, a totally different rationale. It is not a rate, it is a surcharge to drive the carriers and their employees to do certain kinds of services that may not be otherwise fully compensable because of extrinsic circumstances, electronic daisy chain. I don't want fifteen minutes, I want one liner. Why do you think that the surcharges provide any precedential support for the claim here?
I think for one reason, if technology is not being valued and paid for, you're not going to see more of it, you're going to see less of it. You're going to have technology companies that won't won't come to the market, won't bother to improve upon anything. They're not going to keep innovating and trying to make the industry better. They're going to do the opposite. Why would they if they're not, if there's no way, no mechanism to compensate them for doing it, why would you do?
Any other questions?
I had one more.
Okay.
And I would have asked this of Mr. Uriel, but I think it's better asking you. Exhibit seven is the direct testimony of Noah Mocell on behalf of intervener IVSC. Question number nine. Are you able to describe how the captain system is infringing upon IVSC's patents? The answer was, the question calls for privileged legal analysis. Given that IVSC has not initiated any litigation at this time, and has not shared any of the details of its infringement analysis with Captain, it would be premature to provide this information to the Taxi Cap Authority in the context of the rate case.
We would be handing them our playbook if we told them exactly our whole position. And why would we do this?
Why wouldn't you do it for in camera inspection? Why wouldn't you have offered it for in cameras inspection, just like the applicant did?
Yeah, he would.
Its finances?
If they really wanted it, they probably could have got it, but yeah, I mean.
Well, and 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 here's the reason why I'm saying, okay? The argument has been made that the intervenors have not presented information that says that it's not an infringement or that it is, uh, that there is a basis for these cases or not a basis for these cases. I just makes, wanted to make sure that the record was clear, that there was a direct question as to what the infringement was, and there's a no response. So and I, and that's why I'm giving you the opportunity because this is your response.
Sure, I, I think it's a fair question. These patents are good throughout the United States. Well, you know, this information even is in camera, you know, protective agreement, whatever, it gets out, okay? We cannot project to all types of infringers throughout the country of, you know, give them, give here, here's how to beat us, you know? No, we can't do that.
Raising this is the argument was made by Mr. Uriel is that somehow Mr. George said, no, I I've got this NDA and I can't talk about it. So you'd agree that that argument or that statement saying, hey, I've got an NDA, I can't talk about it, seems to be pretty valid, and I can tell by the look on your face, you would agree. So
Look, yeah, I mean, that NDAs are a whole other story, right? But
Is what's good for the goose, good for the gander?
Well, I can tell you this, the only
You can answer that question, yes or no? What's good for the goose, good for the gander?
I'd have to know the exact facts and I, look, I don't
You don't know what a goose and a gander are?
Oh, yeah, no. I understand, but I don't necessarily
I just, okay. By the way, I don't think it's positive of anything that's going on here today, but I think it is endemic of the conversation that we're having today. That's why I'm raising. Okay, it's it's endemic of the conversation and, uh, again, Chair Reeser is correct, we're we're not a patent trial board, we're not a, you know, patent attorneys trying to make a determination as to whether or not those five or six patents are properly applied to Captain, Curb, Auto Cab or any of those things. What we're trying to say is is this in the best interest of the public and the the cab riding public? So that's, that's it. I I want to make sure that I don't I I have made up my mind. I'm just trying to make sure I understand where the arguments are.
Two points, then I'm done. I think that to what you just said, seven oh six one five one, that tells you what's in the best interest of the riding public, tells you word for word. And I think that it applies here absolutely, out of doubt. I think the second point I want to make is there's only one intervener that actually hired a patent attorney and actually did an analysis. And they're here asking for this to be approved. That should tell you a lot.
Okay.
Here. Let me just make sure to, and the board go through Mr. Share and then, or do you need a break now? Break? Yes, okay, we'll take, sorry, Mr. Share, let you compose your your thoughts. I see that you're probably composed already. We'll come back on the record at fifteen after, and that's a hard fifteen now.